Call the Tiffin City Council Committee, the whole meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilman Gillig if he'll lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Certainly, would you all join me in the Lord's prayer? Our Father. Albeit. By kingdom come. I will be done on earth as it was then. Give us this day. Forgive us our trespasses. As we can go.
Your trespass against us.
And lead us to God.
This temptation delivers us from evil. Guide us to kingdom, to power, and glory forever. Amen.
Stand for the pledge and look behind Dale here.
Salute Dale. I know that we don't have to do, at least I think I know that we don't have to do that, but I'm just, I always feel better when we do do that. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to discuss sewer, sewer issues, primarily revenue issues and anything else that will come before this committee. So I'm going to turn it over to the mayor and ask him to bring us up to speed on what he wants to discuss with us this evening.
Well, actually, I think this was the idea of Councilman Schuff. It was one of the ideas that came out of the Small Business Task Force. I would, I guess, feel better if Councilman Schuff had the idea. I think he ought to kind of lead the discussion on this as he did with our Small Business Task Force. Tyler's comfortable because there's no formal proposal yet from that committee. So Tyler, if you want to kind of discuss with the group what you discussed with the task force, I would, I guess, look for you for direction here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as the mayor stated, we've, we've had some different Zoom meetings here over the past few weeks and I wanted to give kudos to the mayor and it was good leadership on his part, I think, to get some of the business community together, some of the people that he rounded up to be in this group. Maybe we could have sat here and taken things as they came along, but for him to have the foresight to get these people together to see how he can help small businesses, I think, was a good sign of leadership and thanks for organizing that, Mayor. So we were bouncing around a lot of different ideas on what we can do to help small businesses or as some of these restrictions start to ease up over time. What can we do as a city? What can we do as a council to help facilitate small business, make it easier for them? We've discussed ideas like perhaps bringing park benches from Hedges Boy or some of our city park benches, maybe bringing them downtown to potentially have outdoor seating. There's a lot of different ideas bounced around, a lot of good input, but it was one of those things where really no idea was turned down, but everybody's just kind of throwing things out there. I guess one of the thoughts I had and what I wanted to hear from the rest of council on, I sit there and I try to think, what's in our realm? What can we do? What do we have control over? And I didn't mean to blindside anybody by this, but I just kind of threw it out there when we were having these open discussions. One thing that we do have a little bit of leeway on or control over is our city's sewer rates. And I guess my thought was with a lot of these businesses being shut down, being forced to close, not being open, they're using less water, they're not really putting a major drain on our water pollution control center or our sewer department. So I think it would be a good idea or show good face if the city could do something to help some of these small businesses. As I pitched this idea to the mayor and Rich Foe, they thought about possibly broadening it, maybe even including some citizens here in the community, but I think if we could do something to maybe lower sewer rates here for a pay period, whether it be a month or two or a quarter, whatever council sees fit, I think it would help a lot of these small businesses and it's, it's not a huge chunk, but a little bit goes a long way. With that being said as well, city administrator Thornton also gave me contact information for our local reps for Aqua and Rumpke, and I did reach out to Sarah Matthews and Scott, Scott Ballinger of Aqua. And what I was trying to do was put together like a potential package of seeing if these other companies and utilities would maybe work with the city to give a decreased rate for our business owners on maybe their water bill or trash, because like I said, a lot of these businesses are closed, so they're not putting as much trash as what they normally would into the system. So as we put together this package, I've reached out to both and I've had communications with both. They're running it up to the flagpole to some of their higher ups to see if they'll work with us on some stuff, but I just feel like if we can do something for our small businesses, I feel like that'd go a long way. The sewer isn't our control. The commissioners have hinted around about possibly trying to work with some of the businesses on their property taxes or maybe having like a reevaluation if they call in and ask. So I mean, I think people are trying to do everything they can to help these entrepreneurs, but one area I think the city could help in on and even with our citizens is maybe have like a potential decreased rate for a few months and try to help these guys.
Brett, yeah, I was just, I was just going to ask you if you could, go ahead.
Yeah, the Ohio Revised Code has a very brief statute that grants cities authority to establish rates. They do have a standard. It's not just an absolute discretion, but the standard is that you have the right to establish just and equitable rates. So, and there's not a lot of case law on what just and equitable is. But it's clearly not just at your total discretion. Equitable would mean that there needs to be some reason to this, any rate changes. Does it suggest that you need to treat all consumers fairly and not just one particular class or group of, of customers? So I guess I would, reading this, I would add some caution to selecting a particular group or class of customers differently, treating them differently than others. Because there, there could be a challenge. Are you being equitable to everyone who might have similar circumstances based on the pandemic, experiencing difficulties like groups that you may want to help? So I give you that as some cautionary consideration.
So if we did, if we, so we understand if we did something across the board.
Yeah, I think that would be, if it was to everyone, a rate decrease of some kind or, or something that you would provide, then I think it would be very difficult for someone to, to challenge that. If you start selecting classes or groups of customers, you might have difficulty defending a challenge. So I think that you'd be better off doing it across the board.
Okay. Thank you. Tyler, did you have something?
No, that clarifies a lot. And now that, the way that you explain it, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I'm not sure how you guys feel, but I mean, I think we could make the argument that discounting this for a certain period of time, whatever that percentage may be, I would say it's just due to the COVID thing. We've never experienced anything like this, but I think, I think it could help a lot of people. I know our budget's not the best right now, but it's, it's one of those things. It is within our control, I think.
Well, and everybody I think understands that this, the sewer, the sewer revenue is, that comes out of a different pot. So it's not, it's not part of the general fund. Steve?
Thank you. I'll direct this to possibly the mayor or Dale Thornton. Wasn't too long ago, we contracted with a firm to study our sewer rates and that was to be approximately a 13-week process. Do we have a timeline on that when we will hear from that group?
They collected data both from the city and from AECOM as part of their work so that they could start the analysis. They now have all of the data as of about a week ago. I'm expecting it'll be another six to eight weeks before we'll get some data back from them, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Opinions? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. This meeting is not what I thought it was going to be. I thought Councilman Schuff was going to bring up a way to help some of these landlords when they had some opinions at past council meetings. That's what I thought, but now that I'm up to speed here, I just made a few notes here. My first thoughts are, and maybe Law Director Howard touched on it. My first comment was, it's got to be fair for one, fair for all. And I don't have to go into explanation on that. And I know council did it in 2019 for East Green. I wasn't a hundred percent behind that concept, but I said to myself when you were discussing that in 2019, you do it for one good Samaritan here in the city of Tiffin. What's to keep an uproar? So it's got to be fair for one, fair for all was my first thing. Councilman Leopard touched on it, the sewer rate study. And again, I'm not used to dealing with millions of dollars, but I understand the Tiffin is committed to like a $60 million project on wastewater pretreatment. I don't know where we're going to come up with $60 million. I know the current sewer bills increased by 5% mandatory for each and every customer that uses a wastewater pretreatment. That 5% number came from somewhere. I don't know where it is. I'm just anticipating when they get done with this sewer rate study, I just find it hard to believe they're going to say, oh, you're charging people 5% year after year. You don't need to charge them 5%, you're overcharging them. I just expect the opposite. I'm thinking it's going to be, no, you need to charge them seven or nine or 12% year after year to come up with $60 million. And if that's the case, we're going to raise rates in the future to come up with $60 million. I'm just speculating. I don't have any hard numbers in front of me. For us to give a rebate currently even for two months or three months and then to turn around in the future and say, oh, we're going to raise your sewer rates higher than this 5%. I'm not sure how well that's going to go over. And not part of the general fund. Okay, I understand this sewer revenue is a separate piece of the budget and I'm not sure why even not part of the general fund. So my input is fair for all. Hate to see this sewer study came back saying we're not charging people enough and then cut back currently. I don't think that'll sit well. So those are my current inputs.
Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really agree with Councilman Jones on fair for everybody. As a small business owner, when I first bought that property on Frost Parkway, I had to pay a base rate for sewer and a base rate for water. I flushed the toilet maybe once a day, brought in bottled water and hardly ever used it, but I had to pay a minimum pay. And so in some ways, it's not fair right off the bat to give everybody a discount. When the businesses are hurting, they're not using all of these services. Meanwhile, the residents are probably using more trash, more water, more sewer than ever before. And so I'm not sure how you can treat it equitably, but the small businesses are already right off the bat being charged more than residents. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Councilman Gillig?
Would we be able to discuss maybe a little bit more how the sewer funds are separate, maybe where those funds are allocated to, so on and so forth?
Sure. Mayor Mottz?
Um, yeah, I've asked Kathy Moore to bring in Matt Watson, the city engineer, because he's on here expecting he was going to kind of give an overview on, on the different financial aspects of things with the sewer fund. So I sent that in a chat message. Here he comes. So he's coming in. He can explain a lot of this because Matt's the one, of course, his office is the primary office that oversees our sewer projects. So, you know, what we have to understand is we have a 80 to $100 million sewer separation project that we're going to have to pay for, whether we pay for it now or the rates are just higher down the road. So that is something we need to be clear on. But Matt, if you're, Rich, if you don't mind, if our engineer could kind of explain that. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Go ahead, Matt.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you guys offering me the opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I'm not against helping our residents or our businesses. Knowing I sat in on the meeting where Tyler brought this up previously, so I tried to do a little bit of research here in the last half hour. So council would have some data to analyze when making their decisions. First and foremost, you know, the sewer bill, how is that, how is that configured? So as Don mentioned, there are base rates, but everything beyond that's based upon usage. So if you're using less water, you're going to pay a reduced rate over that time period on the fee that's going to be in addition to the base rate. So, you know, as Brent said, across the board is fair. I would have to lean that way as well because you know, you have one person that's unemployed right now that is being that has detriment due to the pandemic and they're probably using the same amount of water as what they previously were, or if not more. In a business that might be closed down, yes, they still have the base rate, but they're also not using as, as much water either. So they probably do have a reduced bill right now compared to previously. And also, you know, as everybody started mentioning, you know, we're currently doing a rate study. We got 22 years of sewer work, over $80 million over that time period. I'm sure all of us are kind of assuming that when that rate study comes back, it's going to say that we're going to have to continue to have rate increases over the next 22 years to cover the, the projects that we have laid out before us. So it's kind of, you know, pay now or pay later. Also, one thing I did was I kind of went through Kathy's financial reports over the last few months, just to kind of see what our monthly revenue is in sewer funds, how much our monthly expenses are, because you know, when analyzing what type of reduced rate we want to give citizens or businesses potentially, do we also want to put ourselves in the issue of not doing that research and going into a negative in that account on a monthly basis? So I, you know, right now, as of the last April finance report, this Fund 552, which is Sewer and Water Pollution Control Center, it had an unencumbered balance of roughly about $11.482 million. The revenues and the expenses kind of aren't typical right now because we have the $13 million wastewater treatment plant project going on. So we do have more expenses on a monthly basis and more revenue coming in with reimbursements and whatnot. It's part of our loan. But I went back to and kind of analyzed March, February, January and July of last year. And so I kind of had some data prior to that wastewater treatment plant project and it looks like a typical month, we're kind of receive, we're receiving anywhere around $500,000 in revenue. But our expenses kind of, they're varied between about $200,000 and $400,000. So we're netting roughly $1,000 to $200,000 a month in gain in the sewer fund. So I mean, you're always going to have the expenses. A lot of the employee salaries throughout the city are paid with sewer funds. Some of the, the projects, the maintenance and all that as well. So I just wanted to present that info to council when making your decisions. I think that that is very important.
Thanks, Matt. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
Well, as a follow-up to that, would there be any way we could charge the businesses actual usage then, instead of the minimum base charges?
We do.
Because that would help them still.
Can you answer that question, Matt?
I think one thing that would be something to discuss with Kathy and the, and the sewer revenue department. I'm not sure how their programming works, how easy it is to make changes with the rate and then to portray that out throughout the city. So I think there would have to be more further discussion on something like that and Brent could weigh in on it on, from a legal aspect.
Okay. Councilman Leopard, you had a question?
Well, I had a statement really. Actually, you know, as far as water goes, you got, you got a meter charge and you probably, there's probably other charges in there as well, but your, your bill is based on the gallons of water used. And of course, your sewer, your sewer is billed off of your water usage.
Correct. Yep. Dale?
I think we need to look at the ordinances and Brent will be of help here, but I think the ordinances specify the base rate and the utilization rate as part of the way in which we are mandated to charge for the sewer. So we can't just drop, for instance, the, the base rate for people without doing something about the ordinance.
Yeah, the
Law Director?
Yeah, the, I think the minimum service charges are based on meter size. Isn't that right, Matt? And so, and there's a rationale for that too. It's, these aren't just arbitrary numbers, I believe. They're based on the, maybe it is the, I don't know if it's amount of usage or some other kind of basis for it. But those charges would have to be amended or changed or, or at least abated for a period of time, if that's what you choose. But I guess some thought would need to be put into, why are you making those changes for the particular meter sizes? Is there some reasonable, just rationale for doing that? And I guess I'd like to understand what that is, because that would be a necessary part of the ordinance that you would need to pass. So it's not, so it wouldn't be clearly arbitrary. And then you also, the other part of the, the standard is not only just, but as I said, equitable. Is there a clear equitable rationale for changing meters, the, the, the minimum charge for particular meters and not others? I guess that's the, the part that would need to be developed in order to be justified.
Well, can we, can we simply do this? Brent, keep everything, keep everything the same and just offer a, a discount for a month or two, whatever. Say we're going to give them 20 or 25% off their bill.
You say for everyone?
Yes.
I guess from a legal standpoint, I believe you could, you could justify that. That meets the standard. There might be other things that you need to consider that have been brought up, such as what does that do for the, for the sewer system? You have certain expenses. Have you done an analysis as to what impact that would have on the, your, your sewer revenue fund? And I realize that time is of the essence here, and so you may not want to and have the time to do a detailed kind of rate study in, in the impact that that would have on, on your, your revenue fund. But that's one consideration. But from a legal standpoint, I believe that that would pass the, the standard of being equitable to all the customers.
Well, simple math here, based upon what Matt just told us, we're raining in 500, 500 grand a month and we're spending, what'd you say, Matt, between 250 and 400?
Two and four.
Let's say it's 400, so that's 100,000. That's a 20% reduction. So, you know, we could, we could do, we could do, let's say we could do a 20% reduction and break even for a couple of months and call this coronavirus.
COVID refund.
Refund, COVID refund. You know, I think that when Tyler brought the idea up to me, I thought that you know, everybody's gotten hit by this and you know, people out there, it would be a way for us to kind of give back to, to the community a little bit here. You know, people are out of work. They're having trouble making ends meet. I don't think it would, it's not going to bury our budget to do, I mean, do something on a short term. We're not looking here. I don't think, you know, for the end of the year, but I, I would think a couple of months until we get back on our feet, which we're trying to do now, this would kind of give people maybe a, an emotional boost as well as a financial boost. Anyone else?
Yeah, that's about the percentages. I was thinking as well, President Foe, 20 to 25% and then two or three months. I mean, I'd be comfortable that that's kind of what I had in my mind as well.
Okay. Councilman Jones, you had your hand up?
I'm on the other end of the spectrum here. I don't know where in my mind I came up with 5% reduction to help fair for one, for businesses, every household in Tiffin, Ohio here. I was thinking 5% would be a nice gesture. 5% of, and then again, I can't do the math right now, that 500,000. When President Foe threw out 25%, I said to myself, whoa.
I said, I said 20%.
I stand corrected. Just throughout 20% and then again, I was not hung up, but I was just thinking far less than that. And no, that's it. I guess I just ramble there, but.
Okay. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with President Foe. I think, you know, the, the impact the pandemic and COVID has had has been much greater than a 5% decrease on someone's, on someone's bill. So I, I'm in agreement. I think 20% would is, you know, I don't want to say the least we can do, but would definitely be helpful to the residents and the small business owners. And it's, you know, something that they're really not expecting as well. So I'm, I'm in agreement with that, just to make a comment.
Okay. Councilman Perry, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. As much as I want to be strongly in favor of this, I think it's a wonderful idea. I just, I, I'm not certain I see the practicality to it. You know, we lost $350,000 in income tax revenue last month. And I think just taking away any source of revenue right now is just probably not in our best interest as a city. I know we want to look out for everybody, but we have to kind of keep our own house in order as well. For me, you know, looking at my last sewer bill, that would be a reduction of about $26 from my last one. So, you know, we were still be looking at, you know, over a $100 sewer bill for me. I, I don't know, and I suppose, you know, this kind of goes along with what President Foe said, you know, it wouldn't make or break me, but I think we've already put into place the waiving of late sewer fees, you know, to, to help with this. I just don't see how we can reduce a revenue stream right now.
Okay, I want to make a comment to that. Councilman Gillig, the, you know, people, if they're not working, we're not collecting taxes on the, on the income side. But people are still paying their sewer bills, whether they're working or not. So I think there, there is a distinction there. We're still collecting on, we're still collecting on that side. Whereas person, I want to be redundant here, but if a person's out of work or not working as much as they were before, then we're not collecting those tax dollars. So in looking at, if we, if we wanted to do something here on, on a short term, and I'm just, I'll throw out a couple of months. I think we, we, we collect that bi-monthly, correct? The sewer fees? So if we did something for, for two months, we're still collecting, we're still collecting money on that, but I don't think it would, I don't think it would, it would hurt us as much as, you know, on the income tax side is, is that service. So. Councilman Schuff?
Yeah, I mean, Councilman Gillig, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, it's, it, everybody's budget's getting hit right now, whether it's the city government, the county government, individual people's wallets. I just, I know there's a lot of families and individuals right now that are barely scraping by. And I mean, $50 to $100 goes a long way. That's all I'll say.
City administrator, do you have something? Dale, do you have something you want to say? No? Okay. City administrator, do you have something? Dale, do you have something you wanna say? No? Okay. Anyone else? Mayor, do you have anything you wanna add? We haven't heard from you.
No, I think it's very good discussion, really good points on both sides. One thing to keep in mind is typically at any given time, approximately twenty percent of our sewer bills are in arrears at any time here at the city under normal circumstances.
Well, Mayor, do you, oh, Councilman, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
You can ask your question. I guess I would, I kind of feel like Councilman Gillig with this. Because I've been watching the financials come in. I even made a comment to Kathy two months ago. Wow, I couldn't believe we're in the plus with this going on. And so it really worries me pulling down these fees or these surpluses when we do have this big project coming up in the future. And he makes a valid point with the mayor's already waived the fees if they're late. You know, I do understand, I, I do know people are struggling. But if we hinder our budget even more, I think we're gonna be in worse shape ourselves. And I don't think we can take that chance either.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilman Shuff?
I was, uh, gonna ask if anyone had any final comments or anything. I was considering making a motion, just to kind of see where everybody stood.
Councilman Jones?
I guess that one final comment. Again, I'm not hung up on five percent. I, that twenty percent just sort of, it didn't floor me, but caught my ear. If we do something, and again, I'm thinking if we gave everyone a ten percent break, I don't know who's gonna complain about that. I mean, if you're giving each and every person a ten percent break, just use that for a figure. I'm not sure people are gonna call in and say, you know, give me, give me more, give me more. Maybe they will, maybe they won't, but. If we do anything, I say keep it small. And again, I'm just cautioning the six of us, seven of us. If and when in the future, we tell people, we're gonna raise your sewer mandatory, instead of five percent, we're gonna raise it eight percent for the next twenty-two years. I don't wanna hear that, uh, headache. So I'm leaning more towards a ten percent thing or none at all.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Would it be possible to see, and I know, you know, I really don't wanna add burden to Kathy and her staff, but would it, or the sewer revenue department staff, would it be possible to see, I guess, some more concrete numbers of what we'd be looking at in terms of lost revenue or average savings or things of that nature?
Sure, we can, you can ask for anything. Yeah.
Anything you say.
Yeah, anything, yeah. Cheryl, I'm, I'm sure Kathy, finding us off and split that information together for us. Wait a minute. Dale, did you have something?
No, I was just going to support the fact that we can give you whatever data you would want. We'll look for the past year or, and, and try to get some, what that actually would equate to if we were to do a ten percent or a twenty percent reduction.
Okay. Again, I think we're only looking at something short term. We're not looking for, you know, a quarter or, this is just my, you know, maybe you guys feel differently about it, but I, the, the, this would, this would affect the next, the next bill cycle. And it's every, so, so it could be too much. I just meant, the mayor has something he wants to add.
I just wanna remind everyone that customers are billed every other month. So however you do this, it's gonna have to go in increments of two to ensure that it hits everyone fairly across the board. So it's either, you're either looking at a, you can't necessarily do a one-month reduction. You'd have to make sure you state it in a way that per billing cycle or something like that. You're going to waive each residences or reduce everyone's rate by whatever the number is, five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, whatever you all decide on per billing cycle. We can't really be talking about months because that doesn't add up with things, so.
Well, those, but the bill, the bill, the bills go out every two months, correct? They're not, they're not.
Half of the city gets billed one month, the other half gets billed.
Okay.
That's what you're looking at with these figures is half of the, half of, everybody pays us, or we are getting sewer bills every single month at the sewer department.
Okay.
Every, half the community's billed one month and the other half of the addresses are billed another month.
Okay. Councilman Shuff?
Yeah, like, like you said earlier, and I just wanna make sure we reiterate this or remind people. This would be one pay period. It would be, like I said, we say two months, but it's one billing cycle. The general fund's different than the sewer revenue fund. I just, I think the city has given all of us a lot, a lot of good things. I think we can give a little bit back for one billing cycle.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
I like, I like the Councilman Gillig's idea of getting some hard numbers. Being on city council, I anticipated more phone calls, more letters, and if we did agree to do something. And again, I haven't received these phone calls, but if someone would call me on the phone and, how much is this proposal? Well, it might be. And, you know, without a hard number, I wouldn't wanna be standing around saying, I don't know, and, and stuff like that, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted these, it's always really big on precedent setting. And we're gonna set a precedent here. And so they're gonna say, well, if you do that now, why can't you give us more? Why are you charging so much? Plus, what do we do if this thing resurges again like they're expecting in August, September? And we're back where we started from because they, you know, some places early open and that kind of stuff. I mean, so are we gonna keep doing this if it keeps happening? So just throwing it out there, I don't really know if I wanna set a precedent either.
Good point. This, and I'll just, this has never happened before in the history, you know, in our lifetimes. I don't wanna say in the history of our country, but this is, to me, this is a, a once in a lifetime event. So the reason for doing it is because of the impact that it's had on the community. And, you know, maybe twenty years from now, there'll be another event, and maybe they look back on what we did during this period of time and say, well, yeah, that, that's the precedent. But I just look at it as a way to give back to the community. Councilman Jones?
Councilman Yanatuno made an excellent point there. My wife, being a retired nurse, she seems to agree with, is that Dr. Anton down there in Columbus or Delaine? That this is gonna come back in fall bigger and worse than before. And if we did this here in May or June, are we gonna do it again in September, October? And I'm just gonna play the devil's advocate, what would happen if we didn't do anything?
Anybody wanna comment on that? If we don't do anything, well. I get the, the, I'll answer that, I'll answer that. Go ahead. Councilwoman Boyle?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I'm not saying that, you know, we would do, we would have to do the same. I think the, the precedent that we're setting to Councilwoman Yanatuno's point is we're giving back to the community in some way. So say this does come back in the fall and it comes back bigger and greater than, you know, what we've experienced thus far. Perhaps there's a different way that we can give back to the community. In my opinion, I'm not saying that we have to do this exact same thing, but, you know, the, the reason I'm sort of in favor of this is, you know, we're, we're helping them out in some way, the resident and the community out in some sort, in some sense. So my just response to that would be perhaps there's a different way we can give back at that time.
Thank you. Councilman Perry?
I'm, I'm very much a data guy, so I like to see numbers before I were to just, you know, vote on anything and see like, where exactly we'd be taking this from. I get, you know, it'd come out of the, the sewer fund, but what else would that fund that we would use that money for eventually anyways? Another point I would make for every, you know, one couple I know that is struggling financially. I know two or three that both have been working this entire time and, you know, their lives really haven't been affected financially from this. So I know some people do need help right now. I don't know if this is exactly the way to spread that out to them. But I guess I would just want more information before I were to vote on anything in particular.
Okay. Mayor Mott?
Yeah, Danny, just, you know, kind of as Matt Watson said, the sewer fund pays, primarily the biggest cost is our sewer separation project that we're undergoing right now in the city where we're separating all of our sewers and increasing capacity out of the water treatment plant. If anything, the one thing we have to keep in mind with our sewer fund is actually, it, it's the fund that could cause us the most trouble down the road if there are issues because that's the thing, that's the fund the EPA cares about. The EPA really doesn't care about our general fund or anything else. What they do care about is we have this million dollars that we're going to be spending over the next twenty-two years to complete all of the sewer projects that the EPA says that we have to get completed. So the bottom line is, what this firm that we've hired will be looking at with our sewer fund is, you have to spend X amount of dollars. And by the time you get to year twenty, you know, thirty, year twenty thirty-five, year twenty forty, you've got all these inflation numbers. We know that right now, the money that we're collecting on a yearly basis will not be enough to pay for this whole project. So we have to remember that while it may be the right thing to do now to give sewer rates out, it's not like we're never going to have to make this up. It will be made up at some point. And, and the only way it can be made up is through sewer rates. So if we wanna give a break now, that's council's project, if fine. But we need to remember that it will have to be figured into those rates, and to Councilman Jones's point, it just means down the road, we'll be paying a higher sewer rate at some point to make up this money now. It's not like we're ever going to get free grant money because the EPA doesn't give that out. They'll give you very low interest loans, but they're not giving out grant money to do any of this sewer work. So we just need to be cognizant of that, that if, one way or another, this money has to be made up because we are not bringing in enough money every year to pay for the long-term project that is one hundred percent required by the EPA. If we don't do the project and if we don't get completed by the date that they gave us for the project, the EPA actually has all kinds of authority. They can literally shut the community down to where you're not even allowed to issue a building permit, an occupancy permit or anything. So the EPA has all sorts of authority. So we can give a break today. We're just going to have to plan how we make that money up later.
Councilman Jones?
I was listening to Mayor Mott just then, and if I understood him correctly, I understood him to say the, and I'm gonna say the five percent mandatory we're charging currently is not gonna be enough to come up with this eighty million dollar figure. And if that's what he said and that's what he has knowledge of, I just can't see, given a break now and then increasing rates six months from now, two years from now, that will not go over good, in my opinion, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Shuff?
Yeah, I was just curious. What's Councilman Leopard's thoughts? He's the only one that hasn't spoken.
Councilman Leopard?
I'm kinda sitting back here and taking it all in. Yes, I would like to see a discount given to our, to our residents and business people. But, you know, when it comes down, you can either pay me now or pay me later. You know, it's, I don't know. I, I really don't like it.
You don't like the idea?
Uh, correct.
Anyone else? Okay, does, does the group, does council want more financial information before they go any further with this? Councilman Leopard?
Yes, I would like to see some more financial information. You know, I almost wish we had our, our study back as well, but I'd like to see more info.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
I concur with Councilman Leopard. I'd like to see some hard numbers. And it'd be nice if the study was done and if this study was done and it says we're gonna charge people more. I guess I would like to have that knowledge before I agreed to anything.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes, if we could, could you all kind of get your thoughts collected or what information specifically you want? And, and send that in an email to myself and Dale so that we can get it because we've heard that we want a lot of data, but we know Kathy also is extremely busy. So if you can kind of refine what exactly you want, so we make sure we're not wasting her time on a bunch of data that's not necessary, that I think would be very helpful for all of this. So we're not, you know, we're not saying that, myself and Dale and Matt are not saying that we disagree with any kind of a break for residents. We just wanna make sure the whole big picture is out there, that we understand that if we give the break now, we have to make it up at some point later. And I recall, I wish I could remember the exact rates, Steve, Councilman Leopard, from back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when they, when the sewer rate study was done. I remember higher rates were suggested than the five percent. And the maximum council was willing to go at that point was five percent. So that's, that's what I am basing, can my, my realization that they're likely going to come back saying that that's not enough is off of that information from long ago. And I'd have to look to see if we've got any of the file cabinets here, or maybe Kevin Hughes does the wastewater plant, those old files, because I, you know, I obviously wasn't mayor back that time, but I still do remember the discussions.
Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thirteen years ago when we went through this, our sewer rates were sixty-five percent lower than what they are now. Myself, Aaron, Tyler, and Rich in your previous position, you know, we've all been through this before. And how did we handle it as a city then? We handled it by layoffs. We handled it by reducing administration and city councils, city council members' bank.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, so, and just, and just hearing the feedback, it's, it's really helpful. Especially from what the mayor said, it's the only way that we can make up the funds is by increasing rates. Is there, is there perhaps a opportunity for us to give the option for someone or families who are struggling to have a discount, a discounted payment? And, and then we can put them on like a payment plan. And, and then it gives the option of, you know, leave it up to them if they would rather have the discount now and possibly, you know, have an increased rate later. Or again, putting them on a payment plan of some sort. It's just, it's just an idea. I'm just trying to figure out how to kind of work both sides, I guess.
Yeah. I, I'm, I don't know, I, logistically, how much of a, how much would that impact the sewer revenue office? You know, they, they have limited personnel over there, so I don't know. How, how easily that could be done. Mayor?
Yeah, I would say, you know, anything like that's possible. It's just council would have to structure how they wanted it to look. And I guess, you know, what the call, how do you qualify for that? You know, just like AEP and other places have different plans you can get on. There would have to be some sort of structure established for how you apply and are approved, I guess, for that. I, I would assume, looking at Brent, that legally we could do this. We would just have to set specific parameters. Like, I don't know if it's maybe if you become unemployed and you show that you're receiving unemployment, if that's what you would utilize. I, I don't know. We've never done it before and I've never been involved with something exactly like that. I mean, it has been done by private entities, so I would assume there's a way also for us to do it. But Brent, do you have anything to speak to that?
Yeah, my, my comments are, it's a good idea. The issue is, is that it's done in the regulated utilities in Ohio. And they, they do that after, they've established programs after a lengthy regulated process. So it's not something that can be done just immediately. And there needs to be forms that would be created, standards created. There would need to be a personnel at the city to evaluate, and are these temporary, permanent? So I think it can be done. So I think it could be done, but it's going to be a lengthy process to establish that kind of program.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Gilligan?
Could we maybe I'd like to hear council's opinion, could we ask for figures for a 10% reduction, a 20% reduction and a 25% reduction from the sewer revenue and finance department office?
Would that be would that be easy to do, Dale?
We certainly can tell council what that would equate to on a regular billing cycle basis. So what that would represent in the way of of lost revenue to the sewer department. I was looking at Matt's figures of the 500,000 revenue monthly and somewhere between 200 and 400,000 of expenses, let's say 300 to split the difference. So if if there's a $200,000 increase in revenue over expense on a monthly basis, that's about 2.4 million a year. Over 22 years, that's about $48 million. We have 11 million uncovered now, that's 59 million. And we know we have 80 million of expenses just to try to cast this in some light that we can all get our arms around. We're going to come up 20 some million dollars short of the EPA's requirements over the next 20 some years. Now, that's not detailed analysis, but I'll get with the sewer revenue folks, try to get better figures back to you. But I I just magnitude of the problem and may help you form what kind of decision council wants to make.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? So is the consensus and Councilman Perry?
Yeah, and to Ben's point, too, I would like to see, I mean, if we do a 10, 20 or whatever kind of rate or discount, what their rate would look like after compared to before? Because to me, I think it's all I'm with Don setting precedent. I know at the real estate market, you know, we just had people pay rent and we, you know, threw late fees out and stuff like that. I think it's, I mean, you set the precedent like this and then something else happens, whether it be big or small or pandemic or whatever. I think we just keep that rolling like it is. But I would want to see what more information it would be, you know, like what the rate would increase if we did that increase or did that discount compared to not doing it, I guess.
Councilman Leopard?
I think one thing that kind of threw me was when the mayor stated, we only did I hear you correctly, we only collect 80% of what we bill?
Yes, so at any given time, about 20% of our accounts are behind. And usually every year when we have to assess the sewer bills to property taxes that haven't been paid, there's usually at least about 20% of the outstanding bills get assessed. So we eventually get that money. Sometimes it can take five to 10 years before a property turns over and sells and the new owner has to sell or pay that, et cetera. So, yeah, the statement would be that, yes, at any given time, usually about 20% of our outstanding bills are are behind or unpaid.
Wow.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Councilman Leopard?
I'd just like to thank Tyler for bringing this before us. I think it's very crucial whether we do it or not, I I'm unsure, but thank you, Tyler.
So is the is the consensus that we want to get more information on this, discuss this further at our next meeting before we come to any kind of conclusion? Is that the consensus? I see a lot of heads nodding. Okay, so Dale, if we could get the the revenue numbers for, what are we talking, 10, 20 and 25%? How about increments of five, starting at 10, going to 25 increments of 5%?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Good, good discussion. Councilman Schuff?
Yeah, there's one last thing, too, and this goes out to the whole council. If any of you guys do have any ideas or thoughts on how we can help some of these small businesses, relay some of those ideas to Aaron or myself, but we got a good committee formed here. We're just trying to figure out ways to help these people. If you have anything at all, just let us know because people are struggling and I can tell you for certain, there will be some businesses that will not be reopening after this. So keep the wheels spinning and let us know.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, if we're done with this topic, I just had one other item. That's also why the city engineer is here is he wanted to give an update. We had to make some changes to the street paving program this year. So if council would entertain, it'd be great. We just want to get the information to all of you before you you hear it elsewhere, so.
Matt?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks again, council. So as the mayor said, you know, we're always on the fly with our street paving list. Every year, we send out that year's street paving lists and sometimes even the projected next year and the year after that street paving list to all the utility companies, whether it's Aqua, Columbia Gas, et cetera. They can never tell you straight up what their project's going to be for the next year because they're working out their budgets and everything else. So last week, I received an email from Columbia Gas with their proposed project areas for 2021. On that list, they're going to be working on 18 different streets within Saviya Tiffa next year. So that makes it very difficult to try to plan a paving project when you're trying to coordinate that back and forth with Columbia Gas. So, I mean, I have the list of streets. If anybody wants to reach out to me, we have a map that shows where Columbia Gas is being proposed to work. But when I first looked at that map, you know, it's very disappointing to see that some of the roads that we just paved within the last one to two years were already being proposed on their list. Furthermore, you know, some of the roads that were on this year's list are being proposed to be dug up next year. So it does not make sense as a city. We tried to do the right thing. It's tough to coordinate, but we might as well not pave those roads this year, knowing that Columbia Gas is going to move forward with a project in that location next year. So that being said, I've been on the fly the last week, working M&amp;B was the apparent low bidder for the bid. We had our board of control meeting last week and we officially awarded the contract to M&amp;B for the base bid and the alternate. The alternate was Teakwood Drive. So we awarded them a contract of 500, just over $540,000. But I've also reached out to M&amp;B and we've already started preparing change order number one, which M&amp;B was in agreement to. So what I was what I proposed to M&amp;B was to remove Circular Street between Main and Hancock off the list. So we'll still pave a portion of Circular because that's a long stretch of road, but eliminate the portion that Columbia Gas was proposing to work within next year. Also, when I was looking at it, too, I think it makes sense from the city's end to remove Tiber Road between 53 and North Water Street from the list, just because the fact that the water pollution control center project's still going on. They're using 53 as their truck route with their trucks to access the site. So we can delay that paving a year as well and just reduce the amount of truck load on our new pavement. And so being that we're taking two sections away, I was trying to fill that gap with M&amp;B by giving them two more sections. I didn't want to give them four different streets and replacement of two because mobilization costs and everything like that. So what I proposed to them was remove Tiber Road and that portion of Circular Street and fill it in with Gibson Street, all of it, as well as Chestnut Street. And M&amp;B was in agreement with that proposal. It takes our contract from five, just under 541,000 down to about 523,000. But M&amp;B is actually making out on the deal because we're actually paving more because that section of Circular Street had a substantial amount of curb ramps that had to be removed and replaced. So we're getting more asphalt for a cheaper price. And then what we'll do is we'll just fill those back in next year. So I just wanted to let council know what we're dealing with, the changes we're making to to the list and just because we provided that list to you. And one other thing is, you know, last year, we paved Edge Street from Rosa to Main. This year, the the water companies, guess where they're working? Edge Street, Rosa to Main. But we worked with the water company. I'm very thankful for the coordination that they gave to us. They gave us their plans probably two months ago and we had numerous emails going back and forth. And the water company actually proposed all their work's going to be within half the road. So they actually agreed to resurface that entire lane upon the completion of the project. So we proposed that to them rather than having trenches all the way down our freshly paved road. They're going to mill a new joint on the southern line, pave the entire lane upon the completion of the project and then reseal that joint. So, you know, in five years after that black asphalt starts to fade to gray, you won't even notice that 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 project even happened. But the one issue that I did see on Columbia Gas's list, guess where they're working next year? Edge Street between Rosa and Main. So, I mean, I even proposed to Columbia Gas, hey, can you get in there and work simultaneously with Aqua this year because Aqua is going to resurface an entire lane? But they don't have the financials in place or the plans prepared to to move forward this year. So it's just what we're battling every year.
Well, the price of progress, right? Does anyone have any questions for the city engineer? Anything else, Mayor?
No, I think that that covers it for now. We'll have some additional updates on a lot of other things at our next council meeting on the 18th.
Okay, does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Councilman Perry?
I was just curious on when we think we will be meeting again in person?
I don't know. I really don't know if we know. City, the municipal buildings are closed through the end of May still. A lot of it will just depend on what guidelines come out because the struggle is, of course, the social distancing rules that were put out by the state of Ohio. You know, and we can't deny people access to our our city council meetings. And if we're going to open them up to the public, if there was to be a controversial topic or something that really turned a lot of people out and all of a sudden you've got 40 people up in that room, you can't possibly hold a council meeting with social distancing, keeping people six feet apart. And really, right now, gatherings of 10 or more are banned anyway. So I wish we had a better answer, but I don't, other than say at least not through the end of May, and we'll see what June holds, I guess.
Okay. Anything else? I want to thank everybody for their time this evening. Good discussion. You're a great group. God bless you all and good night. We're adjourned.
You guys.